I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty, and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the Minnehaha County Commission meeting of January 15, 2013. I'd ask you to silence your cellphones. We have a book of what the agenda and supporting documents over by Jeff for your perusal. We also have appliances for the hearing impaired in case you need that and you can check with Robert.
Okay, we're going to start with our routine business and the first order of business is going to be to consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to nothing.
Okay, second order of business would be to approve the county commission minutes of 1/8/2013.
I'll move the minutes.
Second. Who's the second?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to nothing.
Third order of business will be the bills to be paid in the amount of $300,876.84.
I will move the bills.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to nothing. Thank you. We're on four, yep.
Okay, on reports, the first report that we'll have of the auditor's account with the county treasurer as of December 31, 2012 was received and is placed on file in the auditor's office. It requires no motion. The fifth order of business is personnel and we're going to need a motion to approve this routine action.
Kerry, do you have any comments? Any motion?
I'll make the motion to approve routine.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to nothing.
The sixth order of business would be, oh, there's an application for abatement, but we have none today. Number seven would be notices and requests and we were looking for authorize the county to publish, the county auditor to publish notice for bidders to, for a 60 kilowatt towable generation, generator for Minnehaha County Emergency Management and the city of Colton and we do need a motion on that.
TJ, do you have any comments? Kyle? Oh, sorry, Lynn? Have a motion?
Motion to authorize the request for bids.
Second on the generator.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to nothing.
The letter B is to authorize the county auditor to publish notice to bidders for two new 2013 tandem axle trucks, 64,000 pound gross vehicle weight with an 80,000 pound gross carrying capacity weight.
I'll make a motion for the big trucks.
Checkup.
Discussion? Do you have anything to say Kyle? I'm going to get everybody's name wrong today. Kyle and the brain TJ, do you have anything to comment on those? Okay, and due to our new purchasing plan, we have asked that our department heads would look at the city bids and the state bids before bringing them forward, which has been done.
Yes, it has been done and I have comments on that if you'd like to hear them. Looking at, and this probably applies for both of these items, the next item is the hydraulics and dump body package for the same truck. But looking at the city truck bid, they typically have a low speed truck that's not for highway plowing. They use a high pressure hydraulic package and they use a shorter wheelbase with no wing or underbody. And so that truck is significantly different than the type of truck that we use at the highway department. The state bid, most notably their current, or their last bid has expired. They don't, they do not have a current bid. They usually put out their bids in March and so they will have a bid coming up. But if we were to go off of that bid by the time that that is awarded and an order is placed, those two vehicles would not be in service for next winter. And so mostly we're trying to get ahead of that so we have vehicles in service for next winter. There's some technical issues that are different than our, than the state vehicles. They use a front PTO where we use a rear PTO. We've used front PTOs in the past and it's just been a maintenance problem for us having to break through the radiator. The hydraulic live body package that we have in our bids is actually worded basically from the state bid. It's the same language that they use. And their truck body package, they've actually changed some of their wording to reflect what we have in our wording. So the bids themselves are pretty similar, but like I said, we're basically just moving forward on a quicker schedule than they are so we have trucks in service for next winter.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero.
Okay, letter C is to authorize the county auditor to publish notice to bidders for two hydraulics and dump body for tandem axle trucks.
I'll make the motion for the dump truck.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero.
Number eight would be planning and zoning notices of which we have none today. And number nine is a petition for compromise of lien. That's for DPNO 21541 for the amount of $4,238.77. And for that we have Commissioner Pecus.
Thank you, Mr. Letts. This is on, once again, a request for a compromise of lien. The auditor's office received an application to compromise lien and it is for the purchase of a home on North Main Avenue. The closing is scheduled for January 18, 2013 during the title search, a county aid lien in the amount of $4,238.77 was noted against the applicant and his ex-wife. The lien dates all the way back to 1987 through 2009. It is for a variety of assistance including human services, public defender and public advocate. The applicant has an incredible history of making payments towards these liens. To date, the applicant has paid $1,306 on the lien, bringing the account to its present balance of $4,238.77. So really, total benefits was around $5,500. The applicant is employed at Rosenbauer. He has an annual income of $36,625 according to his 2011 income tax return. There are two minor children. The assets consist primarily of the $5,500 that is in the checking account. That money is earmarked to go to the closing costs for this particular piece of property. There is a loan of $2,200 that relates the nature of the liability. The applicant is required to pay approximately $3,800 at the time of closing. It was his intent to use the $5,000 in cash in the bank to make the payment. As such, the applicant is requesting to have the lien released upon the payment of $1,240. This represents the net cash that's left over after the closing takes place on January 18. The applicant asks that you give serious consideration and recognition of the fact that he has a very good record of making payments and has already paid over $1,306 on the lien. So I will make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion? Mr. Kelly.
Here we got, again, we've got a bill or a lien with, it's almost exclusively public advocate and public defender. There have been payments, but the problem is there's no accountability again and when you look at the number of times, I mean, he's looking at the public defender's office as our personal, as his personal attorney. And if that's the case, I think they ought to pay the bill. I will not support the waiver.
Any other discussion?
Well, everything that Commissioner Kelly said is absolutely true, but I also know that it's a situation where we have two minor children, we have a family trying to get into a home and let's have them become responsible property taxpayers.
If the petitioner is here, they could speak to this and they don't have to come to the podium, they can just stand up and make a comment if you don't want to, you don't have to.
I do know commissioners that the petitioner's representative is here and that, I don't know if she'd like to make some comments or not, but I will tell you, I, you know, I've looked at this and I've worked with this as well and I would agree with Commissioner Pecus. I mean, this is an opportunity here for this particular individual to become a responsible homeowner. As you can see from the lien account, there's been nothing since, I don't believe, 2009, though I think there may be some other, other ones pending, but the fact is, is, you know, the offer is, I think, fairly substantial and I would recommend your approval as well. And again, the applicant's representative is here.
If you want to say anything, you just stand at your place and if you don't, that's fine.
Hi.
Hi.
I was coming to over at Mr. Kelly, there has to be accountability for people's actions and public defense and stuff like that, but this is a situation that has been going on since 1988, I believe is one of them, and he's worked hard trying to make everything right. He really forgot about this lien and then once the house closing started going through, they found it and he would have paid every penny of it had he known. Plus on top of that, his ex-wife is responsible for a lot of this and she just thinks that he needs to pay for her and continue to pay for her. So I am requesting that if he went through, because he is a responsible, hardworking man and he is trying to buy a property so he can be a taxpayer on a home.
Question?
Go ahead.
Was there any effort made to get the seller to pay some of the closing costs?
There was.
And was it a repo or a huddle hall or anything?
No.
Oh.
No.
But they wouldn't have to do it?
No.
Any further discussion? Mr. Bar.
I have a question for Commissioner Pecus. So if some of these are applied to the former spouse or whatever, should we leave those still on, Candace coming to the podium here. Should, my question is, should we leave some of those applying still to that person?
Well, at least in my interpretation, and of course I have Kirsten sitting next to me, the way that is actually set up related to the cost is all dependent on how the judgment for separation.
And divorce.
Well, there wasn't a divorce, they're legally separated. How that agreement was applied and whether or not the order of the court says that somebody has to be responsible for the payment. Typically, and we don't have it available to us, they negotiate that and so I'm not going to dispute with the representative that there was probably a split of the liabilities related to that particular property because that's very consistent with what judges would order. The fact is, is that unless he's going to hire an attorney, a private attorney, not a public defender to go back to court and go for contempt, you're looking at potentially $1,000 to get $1,000. So I, you know, it's six to one if it doesn't and the other. So if that answers your question.
You know, in my conversations too, the one thing I will say, there are some of the liens that belong to the ex-spouse in this matter, but most of the liens are in fact for the petitioners when we went back and did our referral and that. So just, you know, and in my conversation with him, it seemed to indicate that it'd be very tenuous to try to get something, you know, and he just simply wanted to clean up the whole account and be done with it at this particular time.
Any further?
Well, I guess I do have great respect for people that have made payments in the past and I would note that the first partial payment was actually in 1992, which is 20 years ago. And they've been irregular but persistent over this period of time. And I would agree with Commissioner Pecus that trying to establish yourself in a home, even a modest home, with your children is commendable. That person will become a taxpayer and getting some money is better than getting no money. I would also say though, along with what Commissioner Kelly has discussed, that this party is probably going to be getting a tax refund coming up in the very near future that may be a couple thousand dollars, but right now is the day we have to make the decision. I plan to support the motion.
Any further discussion?
If I may comment, and I plan to support this just because there's two small children, I don't know if they're small but children in this household and it's good for them to be in a stable situation. And I do feel like he has tried to straighten out his past just by seeing there hasn't been anything else on the list for now and trying to put his kids in the house and he does have a job, so I'm going to support this. So, any other discussion? Call for motion, oh, we have a motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes three to one. And we do have 9:15.
Do you want to do the opportunity for public comment?
Public comment?
Yep, the public comment. This is a time for, an opportunity for public comment. If anybody wishes to speak before the commission that, of something that is not on the agenda, this is your time to do that. And seeing none, it's 9:15 so we can move on with our regular business.
Regular business. Item number 10 is a public hearing to consider supplement from the general fund to the 2013 commission office budget in the amount of $226,000, or $226,175. And this amount represents the IVC housing contract and to speak on that is Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, as you are well aware, we've entered into an agreement with Carroll Institute to provide housing for our clientele that's in an IVC status, waiting placement in state treatment facilities. And that contract actually began on January 7. What this action is today is to put those funds into the 2013 commission office budget under the professional services ASN so that we can make the payments and the scheduled amount of payments to Carroll Institute for that contract. And it would be in the commission budget so that we can monitor the progress of that program and to make sure that the payments are being made to them in a timely manner.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
This is a public hearing, so in case there are any comments from the public on this item as well.
Ken, will this be an item on our regular budget then and will it be a standalone item or will it still be under the commission?
And I think that's something that we can discuss during budget hearings, you know, whether or not it should be a standalone budget, you know. This contract is for one year in length and so, you know, again, this is a new program that we've entered into with Carroll Institute for this type of housing arrangement. We're in an evaluation period to help gauge the success and tweak it. And so whether or not the program continues into 2014, which I think everybody's hopeful that it will, will be an item of discussion at budget time and we can certainly at that time move it to a standalone if you choose. But during this evaluation period, we just thought that it should be in the commission office budget because we're the ones that initiated the action.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So Ken, are, we're already in operation with this plan?
We are.
And so how many folks are in their care?
I had an email from Correct Care Solution who does manage the paperwork flow of the IVCs, you know, into the program and that, and monitors their progress. And then as of two days ago, there were two that were in detox who had just started the detoxification process and that, so they were still eligible to be there. There was, there were three in jail that were there on other charges besides the IVC. There was one in the hospital and that where the IVC was initiated and we have seven over in Carroll Institute at that time, which is fairly consistent because we were typically holding at any given time eight in those, in that kind of a status. So it's fairly typical.
So basically, basically we're already full up?
And that, and again, our contract with Carroll Institute provides for eight. We can exceed that number on a temporary basis, but if it becomes, you know, a hardened trend for numbers, then we're in a position to renegotiate the contract. But so far, the numbers are being fairly consistent for what we've seen in the past.
This is a public hearing, so if anyone would like to speak as a proponent, proponent, anyone want to speak against this and opponent against the budget hearing supplement? Any more discussion from the commission? Mr. Pecus?
We have a longstanding history of working with Carroll Institute and before CCS even got involved, we use Carroll Institute. So I think this is totally consistent with our history and of partnership with that particular organization. So I'm going to support it.
I just want to say that Ken McFarland has worked awfully hard on this issue and I've got to really commend him for hitting the ground running as it's been kind of a disaster in general.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero.
Item number 11 is to consider a request from the Minnehaha County Highway Department to establish a petty cash fund in the amount of $100 and to speak to that is TJ.
Morning Commissioners, DJ Booth, the highway superintendent. We wish to create a petty cash fund at the highway department primarily for use in making cash change when people come in to make permit payments if they wish to use cash. We need to have cash on hand to make change for that.
If it moves approval.
Second.
Discussion?
Ken needed $226,000, DJ needs 100 bucks.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you. Item number 12 is the purchase off a state bid. Number 12 would authorize the purchase of one Chevrolet Impala from Lamb Chevrolet out of Oneida, South Dakota in the amount of $17,879 by the sheriff's department from contract number 16, or 16416. It was competitively bid and awarded by the state of South Dakota. To speak to that is Kristen Trana.
Good morning, Kristen Trana, Sheriff's Office. I'm coming to you guys today to request authorization to order one Chevy Impala to be used in our investigations division. The base price of it is $17,729 and then we will request delivery. And so the total cost we are expecting is $17,879.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion?
I just, a question. I assume this is the standard Chevrolet, it's not a police pursuit?
Correct. This is just a standard Cityan. It will be used for investigations, traveling to counties, things like that.
Any other comments? This was a budgeted item in the 2013 budget, so. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you.
Item number 13 is to authorize the chairman to sign an addendum to a contract between Minnehaha County and Minnehaha County Deputies Association regarding the holiday schedule. Speak to that is Ken.
Commissioners, as you know, late last year, you approved a holiday, holiday policy change for the general employees of the county that switched out President's Day in 2013 and beyond for the day after Thanksgiving as one of the recognized holidays for county employees. After you took that action and we initiated contact with the Minnehaha County Deputies Association because their contract, their current contract also shows the President's Day holiday. And what you have before you is an addendum to that contract that also amends the 2013 deputies association contract to grant them the day after Thanksgiving as the designated holiday in lieu of President's Day. So we would ask for your approval on that contract addendum.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes four to zero.
Item number 14 has to do with policy and we're looking for a discussion and a review of the Minnehaha County policy regarding petition gathers at Minnehaha County facilities. And it looks like Commissioner Barst is going to start this discussion off.
Madam Chair, thank you. It's just been a bit of a problem lately where the, the small entrance that we have on the west side of the building is constantly under siege by petition carriers. And because of the fact that this stuff is going on apparently 12 months a year now, we've often had occasion to have people come inside into the entrance foyer to get people to sign their petitions and even setting up chairs and stuff in inclement weather to try to collect those. Unfortunately, that is a very small entrance and the whole parking lot in a sense is focused on people coming in that door. If that had been on the east side of our building, we've got a beautiful canopy they could stand under with, you know, a large area of paved surface to stand around on. It's a very tight sidewalk, it's a very small entrance area and it's getting pretty crowded. At times I've seen actually two petition carriers inside the door they're carrying. And I know that for citizens, you know, they, in effect, have to run a gauntlet and a friend of mine from Hartford told me that he actually gets a dirty look when they, he tells them he's not a citizen from Sioux Falls. You know, they say, are you a registered voter in Sioux Falls? He says no and they, they grimace at and of course, it's all, you know, the swimming pool and the snowplow issue. I, I think that we should exclude them from collecting petitions inside our building at all. I think that we could work to increase an area outside there for folks to congregate. We could pave some of the gravel area that is currently landscaping. We could take away one of our existing handicap parking spots and build a bit of a plaza for people to set up their tables and chairs. I can see a time when we may have more than two people that need to come inside and they may not just have a stool to sit on, they may have powered wheelchairs, they may have walkers, they may have, you know, right now we just have one or two issues going on at a time. What are we going to do when there's six and seven issues and multiple candidates running for office? I've carried petitions. I've, I understand the inclement weather argument, but I don't think it's our job to make up for what, whether the deity determines to send us. So I'm throwing it out for further discussion, but I personally would like us to ban them from coming inside to collect petitions. Certainly they could come inside to take shelter during tornadoes or whatever. But I, I just see it as being a very difficult situation with that door, the way that is constructed on that side.
Commissioner Pecus?
It's everybody's constitutional right to petition the government. It's written in the constitution and Jeff is absolutely correct with the fact that I have actually seen more than two people in there at the time. I think one person was signing a petition, there were two petitioners in there, and there was somebody that wanted to wait for their ride to come up and they were in a wheelchair. That is our accessible entrance to the building. That is a very small cubicle type area. It actually made things almost impassable at the time. I understand that everybody has a right to petition, but I also know that people have a right to their individual space and this person in the wheelchair literally had someone towering over them, crowding into them. And so I do respect the concerns that Commissioner Barth has. There's only one reason they're picking that particular door and that's because that is the focal point of people coming into the administrative building. If they set up at the far south end, they're not going to get any traffic. However, if they did set up at the north end, they're going to get the traffic going up to the courthouse. And so if they wanted to set up in there, I really wouldn't have a problem. We do get a lot of people that walk through these doors and immediately proceed north through our internal walkway all the way up to the courthouse. If they wanted to set up there, I don't think that would really affect their traffic too much, but it would if they wanted to catch everybody at the treasurer's office. But come April or May, I'm sure they'd be happy to stand outside and collect signatures. But when it's this cold outside and we have people that are in wheelchairs that need to get their rides with the most amount of haste as possible, given the wind chills, I don't think it's right to crowd that, that cubicle. And so I'm, I'm going to support your concerns.
Commissioner Kelly?
Well, I agree with John, everybody has the right to petition, but the problem is, you know, they have to work within the accommodations we have and the thing, there's two issues here. One is that a lot of these are paid, not, not right now, but over the last few months, we've seen a lot of paid circulators out there, particularly in the last summer. And Ken's been very reasonable to work with regarding the inclement weather, but I think right now, two reasons. One, Ken's up here and not seeing it quickly. Two, they're taking advantage yesterday, which I thought was not a bad day. There was a person sitting inside the DL calling an inclement weather situation. I think if it's inclement weather, they should just call out that petition that day. I would support also that we do not allow, and unfortunately, I think if, if we accept out that north end, we, to me, a clearer deal would be just to say that there is no petition inside the building, period. And I'd support that. And I'd support that, if that's what Jeff wants to do.
Ken?
Commissioners, if I could put this a little bit of perspective as well, though, because as you can see in the current policy in number three, I mean, some of that control of what happens in that entryway rests with me, and that according to the policy. And, you know, I just want you to understand, particularly when we were downstairs, anytime we saw that there were more than two, or more than one, excuse me, in that entryway, we would tell them, one of them had to leave. And we made that very clear, that there was only room in there for one. You know, if there was an occasion where somebody came in and tried to do that, if we saw them, we asked them to leave, and limited to one. And so please don't think that we just allowed people to do that anytime that they wanted. This particular, these two petition drives, the last ones, with snowplows and with the Spellerberg Park Pool, and that's the one that's going on currently. Please remember that the vast majority of the people gathering those signatures were elderly, and they were elderly volunteers. And their threshold for, quote, severe or inclement weather was a lot different than some of the paid people that we see primarily in the summertime for legislative ballot issues. And then, so, yes, I did allow some people to make an accommodation, you know, the elderly people to stand up against the wall next to that heater that's there in that building, in that entryway. And the lady who was on the stool, she asked that specifically of me because she did have a problem standing. And I said, "Yeah, as long as it's up against the wall here and you don't impede traffic." And if there was an issue, then I told her I would address it at that time. So I just want you to realize that these last two petition drives have been a little bit different simply because of the influx of the elderly volunteers, and their circumstances and their tolerance for what we might consider to be inclement or severe weather was a lot different for them. So, but we did make it a priority, and believe me, when we were downstairs, it's not just an issue in the entryway. I mean, it's an issue of not crowding the doorway and keeping it off to the side when people come into the building. I mean, that's something that we had to keep an eye on all the time, particularly in the summer. And you're right, sometimes it can be a gauntlet. And that, but, and that, please be assured, we've done the best we can to make sure that all the needs are accommodated with folks, and that we did, we're not obstructing traffic in and out of the building. But when you get two or three of them, and that, and again, they circle, they're looking for those signatures, and that it can be an issue. But I just wanted to let you know how we've handled that, particularly this last year with the two major drives that we've seen, so...
Any other discussion or comments?
Ken, what we're proposing, or what we're talking about here is not, it is done in some other counties, is that correct?
That is correct. That is correct.
So we're not, I mean, we're not breaking brand-new ground here, others have had the same issue. And the problem is, and Ken's got a heart of gold, and it's pretty hard for him to say no sometimes to these people.
I can say no.
There's a, wow, there's a couple of paid ones you didn't have any problem with. The trouble is that it's getting more of a difficult situation. I thought last summer was really bad. There was petitioners out there for everything that you could think of, including candidates. And with that, I would just like to float a motion that we ban all petition gathering in the building, and I'd like to make a brief comment afterwards.
Is there a second?
I'll second it with a comment also.
Commissioner Kelly?
I think in the case of inclement weather, if they're out there, that if a sudden rainstorm comes up or something, it's fine, they come in, but they cannot circulate petitions in the building. That, I mean, if they just want to put that in their little briefcase and walk in and take cover, I don't think, I see absolutely no difficulty with that. And it's not part of the motion, but I think it's just common sense. But there's no gathering within the confines of the administration building or the courthouse.
Commissioner Barth?
I like the motion. At the same time, I think perhaps if we were to defer action for a week and allow people to come and discuss it with us, because I suspect, since we don't have anything to do with city snowplows and swimming pools, that they may not even have looked at our agenda posted as it is even, in that same foyer that they hang out in. And so I'm wondering if we should postpone action for a week and just go forward with the motion, but defer action for a week. And I'm just throwing that out as a thought here.
Commissioners, I would urge you to do that, if I wasn't thinking of that, but that's a good point. My point would be, if you're going to have a specific policy change, and you're going to vote on a specific policy change, as long as I kind of get the flavor of where you're going with that, if you would allow me to take the existing policy, I can wordsmith it to accomplish what you want to do, showing where the deletions are, where the additions are, and then we could schedule it for your adoption so that everybody knows exactly what the wording is on the policy that you want to do. I think I do have a pretty good sense here of how you would like to do this, and then we can wordsmith the policy and bring it to you for formal adoption. And we can do that as early as next week if you'd like.
So what would my motion say in that case?
Just defer.
Well, let's make a substitute motion to...
No, just defer the motion, period.
Defer vote, okay. Make a motion to defer this for one week.
I've got a motion from Kelly and seconded by Barth to ban all petitions inside the building, and then the second was here to defer that adoption for one week. Is that correct, the adoption of the...
Make that proper.
I would say if you're going to defer the motion, it's going to be the same motion when you come back. Now, if you want to have the latitude to change that based on the policy, and I think maybe you do, I'm getting the sense, on what Ken puts together as to our specific policy, it may be better to dispose of that motion and then defer the issue to next week. I guess that's what I'm saying.
The only comment I have is, at least we have something on the table, we can obviously amend it next week, but this obviously would get the attention of anybody that has a concern on it. You know, that what we do next week could be entirely different than what the motion states today, if we were to substitute them. But I'd like to see something so that when they read, when Pete writes his article...
I'm pretty sure he's going to do that anyway.
His pen's been busy. But they will know that we're going to do this, and I'm sure we'll have a couple people in here talking about it.
Commissioner, oh, go ahead, Kirsten.
I just wanted to say, as long as we dispose of that deferred motion first thing, that's fine, we can proceed from there. I think that's proper.
Commissioner Barth, you want to dispose of the motion?
The first motion.
The first motion, dispose of the first motion.
Withdraw my second to it, you mean? Would that be what I would do?
I had a motion by Kelly and seconded by Barth to ban all petitions inside the building. That was the original.
And there's a motion to defer, right?
And then the other one, well, Jeff made a motion, yes, and no second on it.
I believe Kirsten was referring to, as long as you dispose of that original motion next week prior to considering any action.
Okay. So now Jeff...
It'd be first thing on the agenda, then, after the pledge or after the...
No, any.
Other than regular business, okay.
It'd still be regular.
Tell me what to do.
So Jeff, you deferred the motion, and we need a second for that.
I need a second for Jeff's motion to defer.
Second.
Okay, now I have a comment. Been waiting. This was just a discussion and review, and we do now have a motion to defer until next week. We also, as Ken pointed out, we do have guidelines concerning this, and I think our guidelines are good. Although in our third point, in case of severe weather, I agree with Commissioner Barth that our closet down there is too tiny to stick that many people in, but I don't have a problem with people either going to the north end of the building or going to the east end. If it rains and they want to go stand in the east end and gather petitions while it's raining, fine. If they want to go warm up and they go stand on the east side, or they go on the north side, that's fine. If they want to take a chair there, that's fine. So now you know what my comment is.
Well, you know, we always allow petition gathers, if they had to warm up, to come inside the building, sit in the lobby, and as long as they didn't get, they could not actively gather signatures in the building. And that, so we've always made that...
And that's what the motion stated.
Right.
Deferred, or the motion to defer.
So now we have a motion and a second, excuse me.
I'll support the motion to defer, but an outright prohibition, I have concerns with. So I don't know where I'm going to fall next week, but if I had my druthers, I don't want to prohibit people from passing out petitions, so...
So we have a motion and a second to defer to next week for discussion and review. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion passes four to zero.
Okay, that brings us to item number 15, and that will be an update and status report of the 88th Legislative Session on Bills That Impact Minnehaha County, and Robert Wilson will present that.
Morning Commissioners, Robert Wilson. Beginning this morning and running through the end of this legislative session, we're going to do a weekly update for you on the bills working their way through the legislative process that may have an effect on Minnehaha County. At this point, there's still bills being submitted, and a relatively light number of bills to this point, so that the list of bills that we will track is going to continue to grow, I would expect, for another week. I don't know exactly when the final date for submitting bills is, but relatively small number of bills submitted to this point. But regardless, we do have a number of bills here we're tracking. We've listed those in a memo to each of you. I'm going to touch on a couple of those this morning, but if I do not mention one that you're interested in, please ask me, and we can follow up on that as we move through the discussion. The first two bills I'm going to talk about are actually two bills that have been submitted individually, but pair together some way. And Scott Peters has been working on these very closely with a number of other folks to get to this point, and these are House Bills 1019 and 1020. 1019 is an act to authorize involuntary treatment of jailed prisoners with psychotropic medications. And this would allow, under very specific circumstances, for jailed personnel working with medical professionals to administer these medications involuntarily if an inmate with severe mental illness is likely to improve with treatment and without treatment is likely to pose a serious threat to self or others. And again, this has, to my knowledge, has not even been scheduled for a hearing yet. It has been referred to House Health and Human Services Committee, and so it is one that we will continue to watch, and Scott Peters will be actively involved in it as that moves through the process. The second bill that pairs with that is House Bill 1020, an act to revise certain provisions relating to the evaluation and treatment of persons with mental illness. And this deals in large part with the Mobile Crisis Team that we have operating here in Minnehaha County, and broadens the definition of who a QMHP is, Qualified Mental Health Professional, and it expands the, allows QMHPs at hospitals or clinics to refer to the Mobile Crisis Team, and also broadens the ability to involuntarily commit juveniles that are experiencing severe mental health issues as well. And again, this one has also been referred to House Health and Human Services, but has not been scheduled for a hearing just yet. Couple other bills, House Bill 1036, an act to prohibit the retention of certain administrative costs for untimely 911 surcharge remittances. Follow-up on the change last year that increased 911 surcharges, as part of that process, providers forward those surcharges to the state, and this just builds in a mechanism that if those providers are not providing those fees to the state in a timely manner, that there can be some sanctions or some service fees withheld on that. And that one is, that did pass out of the first hearing before House State Affairs on Friday. Senate Bill 38, an act to increase the penalty for sexual acts between juvenile correction facility employees and detainees. This is a bill that was brought by the Attorney General's Office, came out of an incident here in Minnehaha County that did have a first hearing this morning, and it passed out of the Senate Judiciary. And then the final bill, one that we will be watching very, very closely, Senate Bill 70, an act to improve public safety. And this is really a fairly large bill that incorporates a number of the initiatives out of the Governor's Criminal Justice Initiative. And it's been referred to Senate State Affairs, has not been scheduled for a hearing at this point, and there's a lot of dialogue going on on this one right now. Our Bob Wilcox with the South Dakota Association of County Commission is working very closely with this, along with Ken McFarland's been working on this one pretty closely, and this is one that will be a real close one to watch as we move through the session. Those were the ones that I had highlighted. Questions, comments?
Well, the Senate Bill 70, I've had a chance to read it, and there are some substantial reforms in it, but of, I think, particular concern to the County Commission is the fact that we need to understand that when a person gets sentenced on a felony, and they want to send them to our county jail, at this point, a circuit judge can sentence up to 180 days in our county jail and hang, you know, years of suspended ex or suspended execution of a felony sentence over a person's head to have them be compliant. And then if they violate, they can wind up going, of course, to the Hill or wherever they want to place them in the DOC, Department of Corrections. This bill allows that to be expanded to 365 days in our county jail. We've had problems with felons in Minnehaha County going to our county jail as opposed to going up to the state penitentiary. If they go to the state penitentiary, it's on the state budget. If they go to our county jail, it's on our budget. And that problem with having our jail get filled this last year will be absolutely enhanced, inflamed, in a huge maelstrom of incendiary fire if we start sending our felons to our jail for 365 days. Right now, that's, it's half that time, and so this will have a substantial impact on our county finances. We will be building two more floors on that jail as fast as you can possibly say if this thing doesn't get amended, because our circuit judges send felons to this jail to serve their felonies, not to the state penitentiary. We've talked about it for years. This just codifies it. Believe me, that is a valid concern. The other thing, and this is just a nitpicky point, I don't understand why this bill is eliminating preliminary hearings on Class I misdemeanors. At this point, you get a preliminary hearing on a felony, and, you know, otherwise it goes to the grand jury for an indictment. This completely eliminates preliminary hearings on all Class I misdemeanors, which means DUIs, simple assaults, any of those right now where you face up to a year in jail. I'm assuming that you have to go to the grand jury on that. Right now, if you get indicted before you have your preliminary hearing set up, then you don't have to have a preliminary hearing, which is fine. We use mostly indictments, grand juries in Minnehaha County. But I'll tell you what, if Kirsten, the state's attorney, has a witness that doesn't show up for the grand jury on that particular day, and he has to pass it, or unfortunately it gets no billed, in other words, the charges isn't brought, the PH is a great safety valve if you can get that witness to show up at that time to go ahead and bring a charge and file an information. I don't understand why we're eliminating preliminary hearings on Class I misdemeanors. It's really flummoxing me. So, anyway, with those two exceptions, I like SB 70, but we have to get to our particular legislators and talk to them.
And the only follow-up comment I would make on that is that not only has Bob Wilcox from the association been working hard on that, but I know Ken McFarland has already been deeply involved in this. Aaron McGowan, the state's attorney, Sheriff Milstead, there's already a large group within the county that have been working both with our association, with the governor's office, and so this is in the center of the bullseye for a lot of people as far as the attention and the focus.
Mr. Kelly?
Regarding what John was talking about, the one-year deal, there is an offset to that, and of course, you have to take the whole bill as a package. When you start picking out, there are bad things in there probably, but as I understand, in the bill with the alternatives, alternative sentencing deals and the guys that are, you know, can be out in the public rather than be held in jail for a $70 bond, this will eliminate a lot of those, so it will somewhat offset, I don't know how much, I don't think anybody knows how much, it'll offset what could happen with people in there for 365 days. But I think we have to look at the whole bill, too, and there are some real pluses to it from what I understand. to us, from what I understand. There are going to be some negatives in there, and that's all part of the big trade-off. It's just something to keep in mind, I think, when we're looking at the bill, that there are, there are trade-offs in there, and some, some may hit the counties and some may help the counties, you know.
Well, if I may, I would not bank on radical change from the judiciary on the way they sentence people. Judges are very consistent with the way they apply the law.
No, but once, you know, once they're in the custody of the sheriff, it's going, this is going to, I think, give him some latitude on what he can do so that you don't have a, what's going to be a PR bond on money sitting in there on Saturday and Sunday night at 80 bucks a night, so.
Right.
Robert, anything else?
We'd be happy to answer any other questions, if you have other comments.
Next order of business?
Okay, next order of business is item number 16, which is the Minnehaha County Commissioner Liaison Reports. Any of the commissioners that would have comments are welcome to come forward at this time.
Any comments? I just have one. I met with the Highway Department this last week, and their return to eight-hour shifts will be January 19th. They will be working 7:30 to 4:00. With that said, any new business?
Madam Chair, I would bring up a couple items, and in a sense, this could have been under the liaison report. First of all, I'm involved in a committee with ICAP that's working on a fundraiser for the Heartland House, which will be February 21st. And that event, Lincoln and Turner Counties have already purchased a table, and just FYI, we have purchased one, too. And I would invite any of you, it's only eight people at that table, but talk to me if you'd like to come. So I, I'll take care of it in our name, and so we'll be covered on that. Next, I would say that I was at a East River Water District meeting yesterday, and apparently, you know, one of the issues with drainage is the nitrates that come in the water. And they have two experimental bioreactors that filter that out, one in Minnehaha County, actually on the hefty property up there near Baltic, and one close to Minnehaha County in McCook. And at some point, I may be going to go look at those, and maybe we all could see how effective they are. Thirdly, they're, the, they tell me, Jay Gilbertson tells me that there's a bill in the legislature without a number at this point, which would remove the current limit on drainage fees. Right now, Minnehaha County charges, I believe, as much as we're allowed to, to take an application for a drainage fee. It's not necessarily that I want to raise our, our limit, but some of these projects are very large, and perhaps for very large projects, we could look at having a, a bit of a larger fee. And, you know, along those lines, our staff has to drive to, all over the place, taking pictures and talking to people, et cetera. It's just of interest that there may be an opportunity there to adjust those, those fees. So that's, that's my reports.
Is that under new business, or...
Yeah, little overlap, I would say.
Yep, is there any old business?
That being said, we have an executive section to discuss contract negotiations and possibly litigation of a motion.
For contract negotiations? I'll second.
Yes, Pecus seconded.
Discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side, motion passes four to zero.